...with chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice that this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting is provided in a notice of January 7, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on January 17, 2019, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can we summarize our place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united at heart, indivisible, indivisible and infinite.
Roll call, Mrs. Kupuzen.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, here. Mr. DeMaio.
Here.
Mr. Coraro.
Here.
Mr. Kucinski.
Here.
Mrs. Ferk.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Scaletta.
Here.
Ms. Sarra.
Here.
Mr. Conisella.
Here.
Okay, so we're going to start our meeting log with our superintendent's report without the Julie Blazer.
Thank you. Thank you. So, welcome, everybody. I'm thrilled to be back. I'm thrilled to see everybody. It's your energy that keeps us going every day, so we're happy actually to have an audience. The opening to school was really wonderful. We did some things a little differently this year than previous years when we had staff return the first day on Tuesday rather than doing a superintendent's forum in the auditorium. I spent Tuesday and then the single session days, Wednesday and Thursday, going to each of the buildings and having conversations with the staff. It's a little challenging for me to throw out the speech, not to talk about change, not to talk about the journey, but I think that they were really positive conversations, and I'm already looking forward to going back into the buildings and seeing staff to the buildings as soon as next week. They've already invited me back. These kind of conversations are critical to be able to look at the district and to invite all the voices and be able to say, these are the issues that are happening in Nutley. These are the things that affect all of us. We need everybody's ideas. We need everybody's voice. We need everybody's input. So, in addition to having these conversations with staff, we'll be expanding the conversations that we do with students. We do a lot at the high school, but now adding that middle school and elementary school to that, and we continue our conversations with the community. So, that was really pretty terrific, actually. And in those new days, we had the honor of welcoming 30 new staff members throughout the district. I promised that I would introduce them tonight. We did have new teacher orientation the week of August 19, three days that were spearheaded by our directors of curriculum, Mr. Campbella, thank you, and Mrs. Jeanne Holcansolo, thank you. The staff was able to work with our leadership team, be able to have their HIV training, security training, and several days of professional learning to really help them acclimate to their new roles in Nutley. Even though they're going to be officially welcomed to the school district and the community at the Rotary's New Teacher Dinner, September 25th, at the public library, I do want to recognize people tonight. I think we have some of our new teachers with us, so I want to make sure that we acknowledge them as well. So, from Nutley High School, we welcome Sarah Jacob, Louisa Frye, Stefan Gaines, Alina Gomes, Christopher Heitz, Alec Johnson, Vanessa McAllister, Lawson Murat, Pudin Subrato, and Timothy Seig. The middle school, we bring Bianca Riley and Alexis Vasquez. At Lincoln School, Susanna Barbogallo, sorry, Susanna. Radcliffe, Steven Caraccio, Cara Conti, Joanne Longo, Andrea Melnicki, and Tracy Weisenberg. And at Spring Garden, Jessica Duran, Tiffany Henaway, Carrie McGrath, Lisa Manichi, Lisa Plumstead, Megan Papa, Rhiana Rizzi, Summer Smith, and Stephen Marrow. Washington, welcome to Vicki Payne and Yanacaw, Megan Callahan and Francesca Catali. We're going to have a couple of new people coming to us in the next couple of weeks, and we'll, of course, welcome them and bring them up to speed as well. One of the other exciting things that we have happen at the beginning of the school year, not just exciting, but something we're really proud of, we have district staff members who earn their tenure when school opens in September and fall. That's not something we take lightly. You don't earn tenure until after you've been in the district for four years and you've had proficient or better observations and evaluations. So, in addition to just acknowledging tenure, we want to recognize everybody's hard work, the quality of instruction, their dedication to the students and the community, all as components of awarding that tenure. So, the designees for tenure this year from the high school, Julie Chen, Michael Guerrier, Lauren Kazakowski, Carrie McNish, and Angela Melikone. At the middle school, Gabriela Beltoff, Megan Bruno, Michelle Appolito, Catherine Johnston. At Lincoln School, Amy Ambrose, Michelle Lanfrank, and Rhonda Swiderski. Radcliffe School, we honor Katherine Andrews, Stephanie Moosel. Spring Garden, Renee Rose, and Jeff Martin. And yes, Jeff was at Yanacaw previously, knew at Spring Garden this year as a transfer. And Washington School, Amanda Greenfield, Elizabeth Messina, Jaclyn Izavosia, and Yanacaw, Allison Leona, and Alana Martin. It's really an honor to be able to have a consistency of staff, and I don't think any of us could be prouder of the people that make Nutley their home to live and to work and to work with our students. So, again, thank you for that. In addition to the new teach orientation, we did have our administrative leadership retreat also in August. This gave our leadership team an opportunity to come together, look at the strategic planning goals, district and board goals, be able to look at our schoolology goals, and really start looking forward to a new school year here in Nutley. We welcomed our seventh grade students to the middle school and our ninth grade students to the high school orientations, and we're looking forward to back-to-school nights later this month. The elementary school, the eighteenth, the middle school is the twelfth, and the high school is the nineteenth. One more kind of announcement, if you will. Hopefully, you all received my letter today in conjunction with Meredith Gerkins, our coordinator of school counseling K to 12. Today marks the beginning of Suicide Prevention Week. We did send a letter to all of our district families with some information about our strategic plan goals around mental health and wellness, some upcoming programs, and some resources that families and staff can use if they encounter one of their close people contemplating suicide. We do have counselors in every building, and we hope that if that's something that's affecting you, that you reach out to a counselor and we can make sure that you also get services, if not within the schools, within our community partners. I think that some of the largest issues we've been facing in the district are not the fun ones. On Friday, I think we received the second letter from Mr. Jones, principal of Washington School, and myself regarding the trailers, the new trailers in the district and the construction of these trailers. We have taken the existing trailer that was by the field at Washington School and had it craned on top of the other trailer that was there, and in doing so, creating double-decker stairwells, manners of entrance and egress, and additional ADA compliant pieces. Because of the sighting on the site, large piles of dirt, the need to move some data wires and lines, we just weren't confident that it was safe for our staff and students to already be in the building while construction was continuing, and made the decision to hold off until while that construction was complete. It should be complete with a certificate of occupancy on Wednesday. We've made plans to move furniture and allow the teachers into the building starting on Thursday, and we are planning for the students to be in those two trailers starting on Monday the 16th. The week of the 16th, the third trailer that's due for Washington School will be delivered and sighted back at that same place by the field where we craned the first one. Additionally, a trailer at Spring Garden has been sighted. The work on that trailer right now is mostly the electrical and plumbing lines, not any of the actual construction. We're holding off on that construction until a little bit later in the fall. We don't expect the trailer to even be delivered to the Spring Garden site until November 1st after the Halloween parades and pumpkin patch is done, and we'll have students move into those trailers after Thanksgiving. Members of the board and myself will be at the different PTO meetings this month, as well as this meeting and other community meetings. If you have questions about the trailers, questions about your children or staff in the trailers, we're obviously here tonight, but at any of those meetings as well. And finally, we come to my least favorite report. This is the beginning of my fourth year in Nutley, and this is my fourth such back-to-school report to snapshot the enrollment and class size in the district. At this point in the school year, the numbers are still preliminary. We don't do our upload to the New Jersey Department of Education until October 15th, but because it's so challenging and so difficult to meet the needs of all of our families, especially our new families, we do do the report at this board meeting rather than holding off. We've had some technical difficulties today, but Ian, I'm going to ask if we can at least try to the PowerPoint. If not, I'll walk my way through it, but I'm just going to get out. You're fine where you are. I know the piano's in the way of all of us. Do you have a clicker, Ian? I might go sit here and send a time to move back and forth since it is about. I can go out this second. I know, I think we're out of practice in leaving this room.
You understand.
I'll come down. I'm going to move away this stuff. All right, so, back to school.
Are we hit the lights or?
Do you need us to film the camera? Because I wasn't going to, to be able to.
Go ahead, you start, and I'll see if we can get it in here.
Need us to wait that once again or call it out?
Might, yeah, I think the lights are going to have to go off.
Okay.
And we won't be able to do it.
I'll find a sunny spot back here.
Hold on one second.
That's fine, turn on the light. I'll find light somewhere. I'll just be standing back here in the hall. Anyway, so, just pretend it's my voice is actually over there with you. So, when I came to the district in 2016, our demographer, Ross Haber, was just completing his report, and in that report, he shared that by the 2019-2020 school year, the district located capacity for instructional space at the elementary school level. He explained at that time to all of us, including me, that it wasn't an enrollment issue, but that what we had come to call the shrinking schoolhouse, and I know over the past couple of years, you've heard us talk about that, its actual loss of instructional space. We're being asked to do more preschool, full-day kindergarten, our ABA programs, meaning our programs for artistic children, our English language study students, small group instruction, speech, OT and PT, all of that's happening in the existing space. And while Dr. Haber looked at moving programs, moving grade levels, and redistricting to solve the different problems, none of those solutions actually did solve the problem, just moved it to different schools. At that time, the Board of Education presented 15 to 20-year solutions. We actually presented that solution twice. And now, here we are in school year 2019-2020, and our demographers' numbers are spot on. We've come to a place, and I think everybody in the community now understands the overcrowding issues, but we still have no solution. So, as I go through these numbers and present what we have, please know that we're doing the very best that we can. It's not perfect. None of us think it is, but again, we're doing what we can. This school year, we'll have seven trailers in the district, as I just talked about. We have the expectation that a fourth can be added at Washington School, double-decked on the one that's coming on the week of the 16th, that a second one can be added at Spring Garden, also double-decked on the one that we're adding this fall, and if necessary, we can cite trailers that we can school. Again, I don't think anyone thinks this is good. I don't think anybody thinks this is right, but it is our current reality. Instead of moving the sixth graders into the middle school this fall and removing the trailers, we're adding trailers, and we're actually playing a shell game with our new registrants. There we go. So, the numbers I'm presenting are as of today. As I said, they're not final because we do continue to have new registrants. These numbers are going to continue to change until we complete the initial upload on October 15, as I said, but you should know that people continue to register all school year. People continue to move in and move out. That being said, these are as close as I can be for today. I get asked this question a lot, so I'm going to just talk about it here. We do continue to re-register students at different grade levels and disremiting non-resident students. We go through those grade levels each year. I do want you to note that some students are here with a legal decree. Sometimes it's custody, sometimes it's homelessness, maybe they're displaced from their home and placed in Nutley, but those people are here legally. So, before we get started and people say, let's take care of our own, we are taking care of our own. We have continued to move students back to their home schools. There are a number of students that have been on variances, grandfathered in prior to my coming. Our variance process is that you apply year to year, and there is no guarantee year to year. I would say with where we're at this year, I'm not sure that there would be any variances at all. We are not able to house students the way we would like to. And again, please remember, it's not an enrollment issue. Enrollment is only slightly up this year, as you can see. Mostly, it remains stable. Our kindergarten projections have also remained stable, and although the numbers that we're enrolling look bigger, it's because of where they're moving throughout the district. Even the number of variance requests are consistent. We just don't have any more space to put people. So, let's look at actual class size. All right, so, I've given this talk pretty much every year, but in case you're new to the talk or new to the PowerPoint slide, I will reiterate that there is no policy for class size. It is a guideline. And Mrs. Ferk asked me in the last week, what about some of the other districts who have class-sized policy? And I did look at some of those policies, including one from Summit where I was the assistant superintendent for eight years. And basically, those policies say that they have a guideline, and the guideline is based on best practice, and we'll do the best we can, but it is a guideline. And then, any numbers that are stated, if you look at those policies, are general numbers. Our policy committee is going to be meeting on Monday the 16th, and one of the things we'll be looking at is taking our guidelines and making them policy. However, again, the numbers are general, and the reason for that is you have to house all the students. If the students keep coming, we have to find a place for them. So, best practice is based on research, based on what we know about class size, what we know about differentiating instruction and personalizing instruction. And if you look at the column on the far side, that best practice is based on research. If you look at the middle column, that's the district guideline. That's where we were in 2016, 17, 17, 18, our district guideline above the best practice, but still in a manageable state. And then, we'll come to 2018, 19, and this year, 19, 20. And having said that, let me also say, we've had 192 new registrations just since July. That's 51 more than this time last year. We've denied requests, we've sent students back to their home schools, we've raised class size, we have siblings split up between more than one school, and we still have students who are waiting for a move out or move in to be able to attend that home school. We have students that are walking from one end of town to the other to attend school. We've provided free before care or after care and discounted the other half of the day to help facilitate that, and yet, we still have students not in their home school and not able to be even in a school close to their home. Kindergarten, let's talk about that first of all. We register kindergarten starting in February and March. This year, before kindergarten registration was finished, Radcliffe School kindergarten was closed with 23 students in each of the two kindergartens at Radcliffe School. We have a third kindergarten at Radcliffe, but it is a special needs kindergarten, and there is no additional space for another kindergarten. At Radcliffe School, nine students were on the waiting list, and nine students were displaced from Radcliffe to other kindergartens. Washington School's kindergarten also closed, three students displaced from Washington School's kindergarten. We placed students at Spring Garden, Lincoln, and Yanacaw, wherever it was closest for them to get to, and even with that, we still have students that are checking today, calling today, emailing today to see if they are able to be returned to their home school. We also have sections closed at other grade levels at other schools. Second and fourth grade is closed at Lincoln School. Let's say, third grade is closed at Spring Garden and Yanacaw School. Fourth grade is also closed at Radcliffe School. For all the time that people have said, this is just a Yanacaw problem, this is just a Washington problem, as the demographer predicted, it's all of our problem. We have classes closed, sections closed in every school in the district, and not much facility to change that or fix it. In two cases, if you continue to look at the chart, in third grade and fourth grade, one at Yanacaw School and one at Lincoln School, we actually went over even our own class size where we say we never will. And we did that because you have to accommodate children. I can't have third and fourth graders and their parents walking from one side of town to the other when a parent doesn't arrive or there's not an opportunity to be able to go to their closest school. Again, not what we would choose, but that's the reality. The other class sizes are consistent or below. The numbers that you see on the chart on the far left side are the ceiling unless they're in the parentheses. I've been asked a number of times about Lincoln School, as Lincoln has not ever had an enrollment problem. Lincoln has often been overflow school, and as I said, their second grade and fourth grade are closed and at capacity. And the questions that I've been asked have primarily been about collapsing kindergarten sections and making other sections available. Again, we're in an untenable situation. Lincoln School currently has 50 children enrolled in kindergarten. So, if I went to only two sections, we'd have 25 children in kindergarten and 16 children in the second grade, and that is not best practice. That's not close to best practice and not something that we can do to be sustainable. The 23 that are in the second grade at Lincoln School, I think actually the sections were 23 and 24, are not significantly different than previous years, and when I was at Lincoln School for the opening the other day, the teachers actually told me that class size has been significantly larger, and they're looking forward to this school year and very confident and competent in meeting each child's needs. So, you know, again, at Radcliffe School, we have 59. That puts the 23 in each section. We have 57 at Spring Garden School, 84 at Washington School, and 70 at Yanacaw School. So, there really is not much space to do anything differently. I will say as well that, again, we still have students enrolled. We still have students that are waiting for spots. It's not going to get better. I'm going to respectfully ask that this Board of Education, this community, and I'm asking not just as your superintendent, but as an educator and as a parent, to please, please, please revisit the significant and critical need for additional instructional space in Nutley. Until that time, we can only do the best that we can. We can't shoot our kids into any more spaces than we have. I will be happy to take questions on this or clarify anything that perhaps was unclear since I'm talking from the doorway and not over by the presentation. I can see you if you're.
Turn the voice back on.
They'll do that, but I can see you if you're. Now I can't. I could see if I were before.
So, if anybody has any questions regarding, or specific to the class size here.
Class size and enrollment.
And enrollment, we'll take those questions now.
Yes, sir.
You could either speak from there, you could come up to the microphone, whatever's easiest.
And we'll have you sign in when you're done speaking. So, we don't wait.
I grew up in town. I've been here since second grade. So, it's a great town to live in. My concern is, I have a second grader. There was three classes in Lincoln, correct?
Last year.
So, my question is, you guys have filled out enough forms, phone numbers, emails, nothing was sent out letting us know that it was going to be collapsing to two classes?
Is that the end of the question? Is that a statement or a question?
It's a question.
Because I'll answer. So, last year, during the time when we were developing the budget, we used projections, numbers of enrollment, projected enrollment, to set our number of sections. And during that budget process, we also have a committee of the board, who are the chairs of all the committees of the board, and we presented our projections as part of the budget process, and we've known since last April that we were collapsing those classes. That's routine. It's based on projected enrollment. We add and collapse throughout the district every year, and that's not something we send a note about because we follow our class-size guidelines. We are not out of our guidelines or significantly different in going from three to two sections based on the enrollment projection.
So, did we lose space in the building?
You gained children at other grade levels.
Okay, I understand.
So, it's a shell game. It's truly a shell game.
But I'm trying to figure out, if you've got rid of a classroom, the building caught on fire, and we lost a class, I understand that. There's an extra class that's missing without a teacher.
No.
Please, in line, because I'm a new parent. This is my first time ever doing this, so I want to know how exactly this works.
So, first of all, thank you as a new parent for coming to the board meeting and coming to the microphone, because that's hard enough as it is. So, thank you for that, and thank you for asking, because we keep begging people to come and do this, so thank you for that.
You'll send me a lot of work.
Good. Well, I'm thrilled, actually. I'll be glad to get to know you. So, what happens is, you don't lose the space, right? As the numbers of children shrink and grow, as the projections, the grade-level projections shrink and grow, right? So, we can see like third grade this year throughout the district is big. We're closed at Spring Garden, we're closed at Yanacaw. Fourth grade's big. We're closed at Radcliffe, we're closed at Lincoln School, right? Kindergarten. So, what we have to do is find the space, right? So, we look at Lincoln's projected enrollment. We say, okay, you had three first grades and two second grades. Second grades are bigger, last year's second grades, so we need to add that section. And I'm using that as an example.
That's fine.
But that's how we do it. We look at the actual numbers of projected students, and we. and we use our class size guidelines and make a determination of how many sections that we can fit into our same space. It's not a different space.
So, so, so you're telling me you added another class to Lincoln?
You don't add classes, you add sections.
Okay, so you added another section?
The space is the same, but the number of sections of grade levels are what changes.
I want to know, did another section get added to Lincoln?
Yeah, it had to, because we did.
Which class is that?
I don't have that with me, sir, so I can't answer.
Can you, can you?
Absolutely, absolutely. Which third grade that we added the section, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's only critical because if, if the funding is there and the space is there, I just wanted to know where that went. That's all.
So throughout the district during the budget process, we did cut, um, 13 positions. And we did that by not rehiring retirees. We did that by, um, collapsing grade levels in places where we have teachers out on maternity leave. If there was an opportunity not to run that section this year, we didn't.
Okay.
So, so we, we, as part of the budget process, look at this. It's not, we're not cutting sections to save money, right?
I, I completely understand that. If, 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 if you have the sections, right, and they're being used for other kids, I understand that. But it's completely cut that, see, if I'd known this, then I would have come up with a better question, because I don't know, nothing was sent out, and I'd fill out like 10, 15 forms every year. You have all my information, probably have my blood type, right? But I, I can't get this information mailed to me or emailed to a parent, because it's just easier for us to understand what's going on.
So, so I'm going to say, I don't disagree with you, but we have more than 2,700 families, and not everybody's looking to that level of detail. For the most part, a family is waiting to find out which class and which teacher their child has.
Okay.
Right? And as long as their section, right, is in their school and within the guidelines, that's, that's usually what people want to know. In this year, we've had, um, I think some miscommunication or misinformation about the second grade at Lincoln School. There, there seems to be a misunderstanding, looking at the, the school performance reports, that we were going from 12 children in a classroom to 25. That's not the case. The ratios that are on the performance reports are reflective of, um, an average of all the students and all the teachers for that grade level. We literally are significantly at the same place, so it wouldn't be something we would notify typically.
Okay.
We talked about it during the budget process, but typically, that wouldn't be something that would, that would rise to a letter of home. If it's something, um, that we can help you understand, just like I said, we're having these conversations, one of the board goals is for the community to understand the budget process, to be able to be a more active participant in the budget process. And maybe that would be one of the great conversations for us to have, how we come to those sections each year, and how we use the projections as part of the budget.
Okay.
Thank you so much. There's a sign-in sheet right by that yellow folder, if you just put your name and address. Thank you, Madeline's actually coming, she's going to help you. Other questions?
Yeah, um, I have a question.
Do you want to come to the mic or where you are?
Can I introduce her?
Yeah.
So, I heard you mentioned something about a policy, uh, for caping class sizes?
Well, not exactly, school, uh, the question that was asked of me is, do we have a class size policy?
Right.
We don't, we have a guideline. And while, um, do you mind if I call you that again? Mrs. Cork, um, did her research and looked at other districts that have class size policies, um, all of them actually use a guideline, because you can't, you have to house the students. So you can say, generally, like what we do, generally, at kindergarten, we'd like to keep it to 21. But what happens is, when you have more than that, you have to house the students. So the policy has to be worded in a way, um, that allows us to house the students.
So just by having a policy, will we reconfirming guidelines that already exist?
Um, yes, but remember, the role of the board is to set policy. And if there's a question or something that needs to be clarified, I can't imagine Mrs. Cork is the only person that has that question. And even though it's not been my experience to have a class size policy, it, even if it does just clarify the guidelines, it's.
Just in terms of process, though, if you set a guideline, is that, is that like a cap? So like, if, if the district has, you know, a policy now rather than a guideline, even if it's a confirmed guideline, when you have 30 kids in sixth grade, right? If 31 comes to town, you have to open another section?
No, because. Ask for policy? No, because the language would have to allow us to house students. So the language would have to say something along the lines of, generally, or where we, you know, this is, this is our best intent. I, I don't know, I think we have to look at, there are a number of districts that have language already. I think we would look at the other districts. They, they don't really, like I said, this is not, uh, because we have to house the students, it, it makes it challenging. Mrs. Cork gave me a list of districts, um, including, um, where, where I was previously. And there, there is a top 21, I did, I know you couldn't find the number, but it's 21 something, 21 maybe 13.
If I can do some assistance.
It's 2312. There you go, thank you, 2113, I was close.
Yeah, and I can say that I also looked at some districts as well. And all of them do state, they do have a policy which is 2312. Inside of those policies, jacket, when you actually read through it. Um, and I can read the one from Bellville that I'm looking at right in front of me. Um, it does talk about the fact that the superintendent is the person who does ultimately, um, hold the final decision in how the class size guidelines are going to work. The district in itself can set guidelines, um, but we cannot set a strict policy on enrollment numbers because of the movement of students. So we still have to allow the policy, even though we set the policy and set the guideline, has to have, be adaptable enough for the superintendent to be able to house students, if that makes sense. So I hope that offers a little bit more clarification.
So, a follow-up? Okay, so generally speaking, then what is the purpose for such a policy if these districts have them? I mean, ultimately, if it's not like a cap, right, it's just a suggestion, but doesn't that fit with what's already a guideline?
So, so.
I'm sorry, what would be the purpose in pursuing a policy?
So, I'm going to say, and, and again, um, Summit was one of the districts that, that Mrs. Cork listed. And I said, "I was there for eight years, and we never had a policy." But when I was researching it, since I've left and the three years I've left, they put this into place. And when I asked the question, "Why?", it's more for this kind of forum. It's more for, for parents that, that want to understand the process.
So it'd be accessible online?
Yeah, it would be part of our policy book that would be online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I do. Actually, can I step back from here?
Terry, can we just check to see if anybody else in the audience has any, any other questions?
I have to sign in?
Yes, please.
I didn't introduce myself, Sal Valsamo of Fort Worth Nav.
Thanks. Sign in with Madeline, please. There you go, we're gonna, there's nowhere to go. Sorry, I'll stand back here.
Does anyone else have any other questions? With regard to the, the class size? All right, the floor is yours, Ms. Cork.
Okay, I just have a, a quick question in regards to, um, or, I don't know the composition of, of the two se- um, second grade classes, but are the classified students counted in for that, for the larger number?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So the question, I don't know, because you could hear. But the question was, if there are classified students in the classroom, are they counted into that number? And the answer is yes.
Just, do I know, what is a classified student?
A student that, um, has special needs, that might have an individual, um, education plan. They might, um, um, require a special service, maybe, um, language arts or math service or other service, um, where they might not be in the classroom the whole time.
And I'm just going to put one more suggestion out, I'm looking, I'm going to, well, I'm Mr. Via Meister, I know you somewhere around here.
I'm probably just.
On our next policy, uh, committee meeting, um, if we can, just to look at Strauss Esme and see what they have for that policy.
Yeah, they have all the.
Yeah, I just think it offers a little bit more transparency for the public, and this way, if they need to go to a policy, uh, jacket when we're not, uh, in session, it would be helpful even for the board to be able to direct them there first, um, so that we can at least have some, something there in, in the policy jacket that's similar to what I've been able to read through some of these different policies.
Thank you. Fine, can make it. No other?
I just have a quick question. Do we know if we ever voted on that as a board, because we get regular updates from Strauss Esme on policies? So is that?
I don't, I, I, for my time on policy, I did not see it, but we're in the process of reviewing our entire policy book. Um, that was one of the goals that we had set about a year and a half ago, that we were going to try to have that whole book complete by the end of next year. Because I know that some of the, uh, Mr. Riley, some of the policies that we had actually moved forward in, in prior years, they were available, but they were not read, they're not on the website as well, so we're trying to get that book, um, that's consistent and relevant.
Senator, please.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to, uh, Mrs. Carol Gaiman, our VA.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I would like to publicly acknowledge all the efforts of our Buildings and Grounds Department. I had the opportunity to meet with them, uh, last week of August, going to do their annual training, and to let them know how great their buildings look. But I, they have gone above and beyond this past summer, and they deserve a public recognition as well. Um, the buildings didn't look fantastic, they looked unbelievable. And for some of the buildings, they had a shorter window of time because of summer activities that went on. But as always, they rise to the occasion, and they make sure that everything is ready for the first day of school. Speaking of buildings, we have undergone a major transformation of the high school auditorium, and, um, it looks absolutely fabulous. I invite all of you to attend one of the functions throughout the year so that you can see the refurbishment and the updates that have taken place for yourself. Um, I'd also like to express our appreciation to Friends of Nutley Singers. Those parents work tirelessly every single year to support our programs, and they have also given us financial support to update our lighting and rigging for the stage, to make the auditorium even more wonderful. And lastly, we are, um, working currently with our new director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Corigi, to interview this week to fill some positions that became available due to retirements and some resignations, so that we could be up to full staff within his department.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. We now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as a chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, and participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Mrs. Kukuzin before you take the microphone. The first person that would be, like to be heard on the resolution items only, uh, can you step forward? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Dancheck-Morton, can you take academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move back again, our resolutions, one through three, is written.
Sure. Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Seller?
Mr. Brower, would you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Finance Resolutions 1 through 7 is written.
Certainly. Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, I just have to stand on my own reimbursement for the, uh, New Jersey School Boards Convention.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams? Mr. Carter-Seller?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Quirk, would you take personnel?
I move, uh, Personnel Resolution 1 is written.
Certainly.
Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Standing.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Seller?
Yes. Ms. Adams, would you take Policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Policy Resolution 1 is stated.
Certainly.
Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Seller?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated off earlier, all statements will be directed to me as a chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address a board and sign with Mrs. Kukuzin before you take the microphone. Uh, will the first person wishing to be heard on any school-related, uh, matters, can step forward?
Do I have to sign in? Mr. President, Sal Valsamo of the Fort Worth Nav. Um, first of all, in all candor, I don't have my wife's permission to be here right now, so I'm not proud. For three years, I unsuccessfully, on the academic committee, tried to do away with homework for grades five and younger. I was unsuccessful, but I'm here because my father didn't raise a quitter. Uh, this, this afternoon, I couldn't wait to get to home from work. I went to Yanacoh School, and I picked Matthew up, and he's like, gee, Dad, it's first night with homework. Okay, so we get home, and we open up his bookbag, and immediately he melts into tears. He doesn't have his homework folder. Now, as an educator, uh, I, I think there's a couple of things about homework that need to be said for people to better understand. There is zero evidence that homework has any academic benefit, zero. It masquerades more as academic rigor, even though it's not. Over the past 20 years, all academic researches have indicated that there is no academic benefit to homework. But there are negatives, right? My son was distressed today because he was afraid of the impression he was going to make on his, uh, teacher tomorrow by not having his homework folder. For me, right, for me, the stress of, while making dinner, getting moms on the phone, looking for a photocopy or a screenshot of two handouts that have to be done. Generally speaking, you hear people refer to, it should be 10 minutes of homework per grade. I don't know how one comes to that logic when, uh, when you can take my older son and give him what you think is 50 minutes of homework, and he can turn it into three hours of hell. Um, and even more to the point, and even more to the point, studies show that, at best, homework only reinforces something that the student learned during the day. If that student goes home and didn't master that skill, now they're learning how to do that skill wrong, right? They're reinforcing the wrong way of doing it. So every single academic study indicates that homework for, before high school, doesn't work. Reading works, reading logs are fantastic, right, because every kid could go and improve from where they are. But you take, you take family members in the community for something that has no academic benefit, very little, right? At best, reinforces something they learned. At most, discourages kids, right, and does not improve or teach any academic, uh, uh, progress at all. That being in mind, understanding how useless homework is at the early levels. You have families with two incomes that don't get home until 6:30. You know this because our after-school care is packed, and you see more and more grandparents picking their grandchildren up after school. Parents experience with their young ones, a first grader going about at 7:30. They have one hour of interaction, and that hour is frustrating homework that even though a first grader, or a second grader, or a third grader may be only getting 30 minutes, right? That 30 minutes can turn into an hour, an hour and a half with some students, right? And their only interaction Monday through Friday with their parents is this frustrating experience. There's something we know is not academically sound. One more time. Every research, uh, paper in the last 20 years indicates that homework before sixth grade does next to nothing. So, having failed three years in a row, and with Russ Lazinick as well, I'm here, uh, determined just to please, 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 eliminate homework for grades five and below. Thank, oh, with the exception of reading logs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valsamo. Anyone else wishing to?